Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Bentley, when you call the roll tonight, please, everyone make state your name, the township, the county, and the state.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hardy.
Michael Hardy is present at McComb Township, the county of McComb, the state of Michigan.
Aaron Tuckfield.
Aaron Tuckfield is president in McComb Township, county of McComb, state of McComb.
Nunzio Provinzano.
He is absent tonight. Isn't he? He has an excused absence.
Used. Jasper Schudo.
Jasper Schudo is here broadcasting from McComb Township, county of McComb, state of Michigan.
Dan Spatafora.
Dan Spatafora is president of McComb Township, McComb County, Michigan.
Charles Oliver.
Charles Oliver, we note from McComb Township, county of McComb, state of Michigan.
Rich Bentley. At McComb Township offices, township of McComb, county of McComb, state of Michigan.
Mr. Chairman, before we go any further, I'd like to make a motion to exclude member Provinzano from any and all roll call votes.
Motion made by Mr. Schudo to exclude Mr. Provinzano.
Support.
Who supported? Was that you, Mr. Spatafora?
Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Oliver. So, so. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Yes. Mr. Schudo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Yes.
Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver. Uh, Mr. Bentley, yes, and Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
All righty, motion passes. Everybody, just so the public knows and you know, uh, the reason I'm not at Township Hall tonight is my doctor recommended that I take it a little bit easy tonight and not do any traveling. I had five pounds of fluid taken off my lungs between the lung and the pleural space. So he said he'd rather not have me drive at night and just for the night. So I'll be back. I'll be at Township Hall the next time and everything will be good. Uh, approval of the minutes for two, for February 2nd, 2021. Uh, I don't think we received them last time, so we need to approve those minutes and then we need to approve the minutes from uh, our last meeting, 21621. So can we make a motion for the 2221?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Schudo.
Question on the motion, if I may, to the extent that there were, um, typos, if you want to get at least the record, uh, correct. Um, Mr. Skurto, our planning consultant, uh, throughout the minutes, uh, his name was referred to in several pages several times as S C R U T O. His last name, I believe, is correctly spelled S C U R T O. And also one of the attendees at the February 2nd meeting who was, um, representing, uh, phone factory, Rachel Badalamenti. It was referred to as Bala Menti. I know on information, knowledge, and belief the correct spelling of her last name would be B A D A L A M P M T I. And it's pronounced Battle of N T. So with that and the correcting of the typos is the question, um, if there's no other additions, corrections, or deletions, I will second that motion to approve minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Did somebody second it? Somebody like to second it?
I'll second it, because he made the motion to correct the, the minutes, so I'll second his motion.
Motion for the, to approve the minutes of February 2nd, 21 with the corrections by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Schudo, Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I have a little bit of discussion on it, if you could.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. I just wanted to verify, I had forwarded some, uh, corrections to Mr. Bentley as well, I think similar to Mr. Spatafora. Um, but they were late in the week, so I'm not sure if he received them. I also noticed the, the names, pronunciations, and then the only other changes that I had, was my name is spelled with an extra I on the fourth page, uh, in the motions. Um, there was, there was a couple of typos, uh, but that'll probably be the only one, uh, would be the name that I would really want to correct at this point, Mr. Bentley, as I've received, uh, got that information. So I just want to make sure that's corrected as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Again, we have a motion by Mr. Spatafora and supported by Mr. Schudo. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Schudo.
Yes.
Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes. The minutes for two, for February 2nd, 21, pass. Uh, minutes for 21621. Uh, do we have some discussion on those minutes?
Yes, again, Mr. Chair, um, some more typos that I, uh, spotted, beginning with page one of nine. Um, after roll call, there's about four paragraphs down, member should be Provinzano. You have to remove that second, uh, letter O from the spelling. Also, page, uh, three of nine, uh, the, uh, first reference to our planning consultant, again, Mr. Skurto. It's a typo, his name is misspelled there, and also, uh, two lines down. S C U R O R T O. Page, uh, five of nine, again, Mr. Skurto, the first reference to him, that is misspelled with a typo. Uh, page six of nine, there's, uh, two instances of Mr. Skurto's name, uh, misspelled with a typo. And then my name, second from the bottom, is misspelled, there's an extra P after S P A, as that be corrected. Uh, in paragraph number 12, planning department items, I think Chairman Hardy has said thanked Ben Aloya, I think it'd be corrected to be thanked E B Ben Aloya for the rest of that sentence. With that, I have no further corrections.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Chairman, just a, a quick note, this is Commissioner Tuckfield.
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
I believe that the corrections I had noted on the last motion were actually for this meeting, so just to verify, we're referring to the minutes from our last meeting, I believe it was the 16th.
So we're not talking about, you, what your comments earlier were about the 216?
That is correct, not the 22. So, um, my, on that, um, names, as Mr. Spatafora noted, I had caught the, uh, spelling, Mr. Skurto's name, my name was misspelled on the fourth page. Um, and then there was a couple of other, uh, typos that I think I would leave for the moment.
Okay.
I'll try to make sure.
Is there any other discussion? Does somebody like to make a motion with, uh, Mr. Spatafora and Mr. Tuckfield's changes to the, to the minutes?
Go ahead, make that motion to approve the meeting minutes of, uh, February 16, 2021, with the corrections as noted.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora.
Supported by Tuckfield.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Schudo.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes, and Mr. Hardy.
Yes. Okay. The motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda discussion. Anyone?
If there is no discussion, Mr. Hardy, this is Mr. Oliver, I will approve tonight's agenda.
Okay, motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Who supported? Mr. Schudo?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Schudo.
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. First item under new business, rezoning request, AG Agricultural to R1 Residential, One Family Urban, permanent parcel 082220009. Um, this part is off of, part of, south of Vesper Drive, located on the west side of Card Road, approximately a half a mile south of 23 Mile. Max Proprieties LLC petitioner. Mr. Box and Mr. Skurto.
Thank you, Chairman Hardy. Um, so as you mentioned, this, uh, this location, this parcel is located, uh, just south of Vesper and west of Card Road. Um, the petitioner is asking if we change the zoning map from, uh, a AG or agricultural zone to R1 residential, one family. The parcel currently owned by the Chippewa Valley School District, uh, they, the school district has authorized the applicant, Mr. Darryl Gatzis, who is here on the line tonight, uh, via an affidavit, uh, of ownership to apply for this rezoning on their behalf. Uh, this is kind of a simple process, but kind of a difficult process at the same time. I'm actually going to share, uh, something on the screen here. And hope, uh, I can explain exactly what we're doing. For everyone, bear with me here. Okay, hopefully everybody can see my screen now. All right, so, as you see on, on, on the screen, the, the desired, uh, product here is, is a R1, lot which would encompass a couple pieces, a piece owned by the school as well as a piece owned by the neighboring R1 property, uh, to the east of the school lot. I think the end product is something that everyone, uh, in the township, uh, offices is in favor of. However, in order to get there is a little bit difficult, so actually, the, what we're seeking tonight is, is more of a conditional, uh, approval for this rezoning because it's going to need some variances to get to that point, uh, which, uh, Mr. Gatzis will be, uh, with us on Thursday as well at the ZBA meeting, seeking those variances. So, uh, to walk you through it, uh, everything you see highlighted here in yellow is all part of the school property. It was one large parcel prior to the roadway going through. When the roadway went through, the parcel was never actually separated, so those are all one parcel. All three pieces are the same parcel. So in order to split off, uh, the piece that would be in the southeast corner, the small piece, uh, it, it actually is too small and doesn't need, or doesn't meet, uh, the size requirements of any of our zoning categories, but in order to split that off from the AG, it's going to need a variance because it's too small, it doesn't meet AG, and again, it actually doesn't meet any zoning category, it's too small. So, as I said, that, that's the piece that's going to be split off, uh, if everything is approved, uh, from the parent parcel. And it will then be a small piece of AG. It then needs to be rezoned to R1, uh, so that it can be combined with a piece that's going to be split off with the neighboring R1 lot. Uh, as you see here, the, the back half of the neighboring lot, um, Mr. Gatzis has, uh, worked with this landowner to secure, uh, the right to split that piece off as well. Again, that piece is going to be too small and is going to need a variance. It's not large enough to be an R1. So once that's split off and the piece from the school is split off, the piece from the school can be rezoned to R1, which is what we're seeking today, so the two pieces can be, uh, merged together because you can't merge two, uh, pieces of different zones. So they both would need to be zoned R1. Uh, so again, the end product is something that, uh, I think we're all in favor of at, at the township offices, all the different departments, uh, building, planning, engineering, water, sewer. It's just a few steps to get there. Uh, and again, I, I just want to reiterate, this is a rezoning. Uh, what happens in the future on this lot will be handled at such time that, that a site plan would come in, uh, should they choose to do anything with this lot. Right now, we are only here to discuss, uh, the rezoning of this parcel, uh, not anything with regard to what may or may not be built there in the future.
Okay, we're looking at a conditional rezoning, right? Because of right now.
Correct.
Okay.
It would be condition, well, it would be a rezoning conditioned on the approval of all variances.
Okay. Let's open it up to discussion, commissioners. Oh, wait a minute, I changed my mind. Um, is the petitioner from Max Properties, Mr. Gasp, I've been, what's your name? I'm sorry. But I'll call you Max, if that's okay.
Yeah, yes.
Have any comments or que, any comments? Go ahead, Darryl.
Um, uh, at this point, I think, uh, I think Mr. Box did a great job explaining it. Um, that is our intention. And if, if the conditional, um, conditional rezoning is, is approved, then we'll move forward with the variances, and our, our goal is to, uh, complete this as a single-family residential lot.
Okay. Let's open it up to commissioners. Any comments?
I got one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Oliver.
Mr. Box, uh, when we're done with this property, if everything continues, this lot will end up 100 by 130? It'll match the other lots, or how close will that be?
It will, uh, be, I believe, identical to the neighboring lot to the south. I, I don't have those dimensions right in front of me.
Okay. It looks like it could, I was just trying to math it out real quick.
There's two lots.
Well, they're going to combine.
But yeah, 130, uh, would be the, the depth.
The depth and the, uh, 100 foot wide?
100 foot wide, correct.
Okay, that's question one, thank you. And question two, um, if this lot gets built, where will the driveway be? On Vesper or would it be on Gene Drive?
Uh, well, um, that's to be determined in the future. I would imagine that would be on Gene Drive, not Vesper. Um, but again, that's, that would be something that would be entered when we get to that phase.
When you get to that point, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, just to, um, clarify with Mr. Gatzis, the petitioner, your intent is to build a single-family home of residence on that parcel after, um, it's split and the variances are granted?
That would be the intention, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Gatzis, when would you be starting, if, once you have, you know, the, uh, the rezoning done and the approval done? How long before you start putting in roads and building houses?
Well, the, the, the roads are existing, but there is going to be, I, I would say probably at least a uh, it could be up to a year, six months to a year, if you've got to do boundaries, topo, site planning, um, there is some engineering involved, so water main does exist, the roads are existing. The sanitary, uh, exists in an easement just to the south, so the sanitary has to be extended. So I, I would think at a minute, it's going to be years' process to get through all the approvals and, and extend this, at least a year.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tuckfield, I did see your hand. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Mr. Hardy, thank you. Uh, to Mr. Box, uh, you had mentioned, uh, in your presentation that this is one parcel, the portion on the north side of Vesper, uh, the portion on the west side of Gene, and the portion on the east side of Gene, all the way at the corner. So I assume that's the parcel ID, um, that we are looking at. Is that the parcel ID, or are we looking at a potential future parcel split ID?
That is the parcel ID of the, the existing parcel that the school sent on.
So tonight, we are looking to recommend a rezoning for the parcel, for a future parcel? What, what technically are we, what technically are we looking at?
We're seeking to, uh, get a conditional rezon, a rezoning conditioned on variances of that piece of the parcel, the piece that would be south of Vesper and east of Gene.
So not the portion that is east of Gene at all? That would be, if, if there's consideration with that, that's at a future time, a future, a future request?
I'm sorry, say that again.
So the, the portion, the portion.
South of Vesper, east of Gene is what we're looking at.
Right, but the portion, portion west of Gene, we're not looking at tonight.
We are not looking at that, only the portion east of Gene.
Um, are we looking tonight at the west end of the parcel to the east of the subject parcel? So the one that would have the back portion split off?
39, 16 feet. That, that, that parcel does not require, um, a rezoning, it's already R1.
That is R1 and not R1S.
We are, we have, we are not looking at that tonight.
Okay.
You will see that on Thursday, but not tonight.
Okay. And then the last, the last question, just to keep, just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page. The variance requests, and I would stress that they're, they are requests at this point because, um, they have not been heard or granted or denied. Which ones are, is, is tied to this rezoning tonight?
The one that would, so the size of the parcel split off is not large enough to be AG, that one would be tied to the rezoning.
Okay. And that's the only one, because we have additional potential variances there, but they would not be connected.
Would not be connected to this.
Okay. Very good. I think that's everything I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Just the point of it.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield.
Yeah, the, would there be two conditions? One is the granting of the variance which you've identified, and also that the split that combined is approved by McComb Township. Uh, yes, yes. That would be the second condition. Yep.
And just to make, sorry, Mr. Hardy, one last question, and I know we've gone through this before, I know Mr. Mr. Skurto was, was noting this as we were going along. Can you please make sure we're, what's, what's the correct term for it? I know it's not a conditional rezoning, but a rezoning conditioned upon?
Yes, exactly. It's rezoning with conditions, as opposed to a conditional, we had another animal.
Which is another thing that we don't want to, uh, that we don't want to present on the message.
We appreciate that.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. Tuckfield. It sounds like you'd like to make a motion, maybe.
Uh, well, I'd certainly like to hear from the public first, but I might, might be.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Uh, we'll open it up to the public at 7:25. Mr. Box. Do you have anyone that would like to speak?
Yes, anyone who would like to speak, uh, virtually raise your hand or press star nine, I believe, on your cell phone if you have dialed in. Uh, we do have one already, Amy. Uh, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you should be able to speak.
Good evening, can you, can you all hear me?
We can, go ahead, Amy.
Okay. Um, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Amy Mayer, and I'm one of the many residential properties off Vesper, adjacent to the property up for discussion this evening for rezoning. Please bear with me as I express my concerns this evening, because I am not a public speaker, but I do need your help.
Amy, I, I hate to interrupt you, uh, but before you get going, uh, please state your name, full name, and your address for us.
Okay. Amy Mayer, 21677 Phoenix Drive.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, this is my first time, so I don't know how these meetings go. Um, so I'll, I'll continue. I've lived in this home, like many of my neighbors, for over 11 years. The property that is being considered for rezoning has drainage issues. If you were to drive by today, you would see a large portion of this property has standing water on it and is very mushy. This is an important data point for you. It is important because of the proposed owner of this property that is pushing for the rezoning is not only the principal of the LLC that wants to develop it, he is also an employee of the county drain commission. By no means am I accusing or implying that this individual or any member of the Township Zoning Commission is involved in any wrongdoing regarding this issue. By no means am I implying that a public employee cannot invest in land. However, given the drainage issues on this property that appear to be very severe, my neighbors and I are concerned. We are concerned that this individual's position can be used to influence the drainage on this property to not only put his property in a better position, but ultimately having a negative impact on the current adjacent neighbors to this property. I am concerned for my family, my property, my investment, and most importantly, our health. I know we have ethics ordinance, and I know you are all believers in that. I know that all of you support transparency, and my purpose this evening is to ensure that all of you have visibility to all the aforementioned dynamics. Most importantly, I wanted to make sure that I went on record about the current draining issues on this property. God forbid we were to have any issues with drainage in the future. I simply wanted to do my part in communicating with my elected and appointed officials of the township that I am proud to be a resident of. I wanted to note that I appreciate professionalism of your commission and to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Amy. Nice job.
Thank you.
Mr. Box, anyone else?
I am not seeing anyone else at this time.
Okay. Just for Amy's sake, uh, just so you know, this is a rezoning only, and all those drainage issues will be resolved, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Box, as Mr. Gasp cheese goes through the process of getting final approval for, uh, his, uh, property to be built on. Am I correct?
Correct. Any, any rezoning, uh, does not guarantee that anything can be built, it just changes the zone. Uh, so it changes what, uh, would be allowed to be built should, uh, all of the conditions, uh, be favorable for such building. Uh, this has to go through the engineering department, water and sewer, all appropriate departments within the township before anything is constructed. This is just simply rezoning.
Yes, and that's why when Darryl spoke, he's at least a year out, because he's got a lot of hoops to get through before he can even start building. Okay. Um, anybody else? You said no?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then we will close the public portion at 7:29. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Tuckfield.
Yes.
Mr. Schudo.
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora.
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next item on our list, site plan, McComb Industrial Unit 19.
Wait, Mr. Chairman. The, the vote you just took, I believe, was just to close the closing.
Well, it was, wasn't it? You know what? Tonight, I'm going to blame it on my procedure. You know, next time, you can just blame it on my being absent minded. Um, okay, Luke, do we have a motion to rezone this AG to R1?
Chairman, I, I would, I would be willing to make a motion, but I did have two questions if I could be, uh, given the opportunity to ask them.
You will consider, consider being given an opportunity. Go ahead.
Very good, Mr. Hardy. Uh, the first question, if I could, and I, I don't know if this would be in order, but I just wanted to verify, um, with the resident who had spoken, if she was concerned specifically about the property to the east of Gene or to the west of Gene. It's possible to ask her that question if, if she could answer. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if that's something you want to do, obviously, we are out of the public commentary.
Yeah, I would prefer that we don't set a precedent.
Okay, very good. Then, then what I will say is when I've driven past the area, the portion to the west side of Gene, I believe, is the area she was referring to. Um, it certainly is the area that is, um, wet and, and it does have apparent water issues at the moment, or water issues may not be the correct phrase, but it's, it does have water on it at the moment, and I just wanted to, to clarify that the portion that we're talking about tonight is specifically the portion to the east of Gene, and at least in my drive by, I did not look at it today, but I have looked at it in the past. Um, that portion that we are specifically referring to tonight does not seem to have those problems. Now, obviously, this is part of a larger project, but I just want to make the, the comment that what we are specifically addressing tonight, not only is it earlier in the process than we typically would deal with water issues, it also is not directly the portion that I believe is of concern. So I just wanted to make, uh, that comment first. Uh, the second question that I had was for Mr. Fox, um, just to verify, this section of, of land, do we have a master plan designation for it at the moment on our master plan map?
So that's a good question. We do have a designation for it. It is actually designated as public schools, which we do not have a zoning category for, uh, which is why it's zoned AG. We have to have it actually zoned a legal zoning category, so uh, it is on the master plan, it is shown as public school, which we don't have a zoning category for.
Correct, and it would be, it would be zoned that way because typically the school maintains its property and.
Correct.
The, the adjacent properties are, uh, well, obviously you have the school, but the properties directly to the south and then directly to the east are currently both zoned R one and master planned for R ones. That.
That's correct.
So to the, to the question of him, are we matching the existing, um, the surrounding uses? Um, the surrounding uses are residential or school, and if it's not school property, the, the most apparent, uh, appropriate use would typically be R one based on other patterns that we, we perceive.
Correct, and, and I think, uh, to, to add to that, I know Dave, we talked about this earlier. The school being on, uh, a parcel that's actually zoned AG is somewhat out of the norm. Uh, most of them are on a residentially zoned parcel typically.
In our experience with.
And then I guess I have one last question. If this remained AG and we, we've decided that there was a practical difficulty to grant a variance for it, I don't believe that parcel could be built as AG even if it was allowed to be split. Is that accurate?
It could not be built as AG if it were allowed to be split.
So, so currently, as we would see it, it's a, it's an unusable piece of property as currently constructed.
Essentially, I think the school could use it for some agricultural purposes because it is technically part of the larger parcel at this time.
Well, if, kind of breaking if you don't mind, a school property is exempt from zoning. They can do anything they want with that property. They could build a repair garage on that property if they want. What the rezoning will do will allow the school to sell that property, a private developer, will be restricted by whatever zoning requirements we have in place. As of right now, that property is unrestricted for any use of the school needs feasible.
In theory, essentially.
It likelihood, it's not gonna happen.
It will be the equivalent of unzoned, except we have, we have to zone it something because we're required.
We are required to zone it, but yet the school can use it any way it feels like it can.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to ask those questions. Uh, that being said, if there's no further discussion, I hope there isn't anyone saying anything. Um, I would make a motion to recommend to the board trustees, uh, rezoning this parcel or this portion of this parcel, conditional upon the appropriate variances being granted and the township assessor allowing the split. Uh, and this would be based upon consistency with surrounding uses, uh, also the recommendations of our department heads and the general development of our, of our, uh, land being consistent with this approach.
I would support.
And Mr. Bentley will support. So motion by Mr. Tuckfield, supported by Mr. Bentley, and Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now that we're, now that I'm on the right track, hopefully we can do this next one a little bit better. Site plan, McComb industrial unit nineteen, permanent parcel number zero eight, one eight, three, six, two, zero, one, nine, located on the south side of Claire Court, east of Milano Drive. Giovanni Giamino, did I say that right, Giovanni?
Uh, no, you gotta say it with the K.
Okay, say it again for me.
Chimo.
Chimo. Oh, that's easy.
I know.
All right. Mr. Box, start with you.
I'm actually gonna pass this one off to, uh, Dave.
Okay, Mr. Skurdo.
Hey, thank you. Uh, Chairman, let me start. This, this, um, site has a history that kind of predates us by a few years. I'm gonna try to walk generally through the history, then allow you to ask the applicant questions. Um, it appears that the, this, it was supposed to be, there's a single small building, uh, built on the property right now. Uh, appeared in two thousand and eighteen, it was supposed to be, a site plan was submitted for one large building, uh, that never went through. Then we look at two thousand and nineteen, and we found that the planning commission on May twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen had approved a site plan for two buildings on two separate units, um, for two separate lots in that area. One building has been constructed and one wasn't constructed. Um, then we fast forward up to the end of two thousand and twenty, um, the applicant came in, um, we looked at his site and found that since this was phased, the site had to be sodded and irrigated to be stabilized. Um, the applicant took that back and then he resubmitted in two thousand and twenty with what we believe is the original site plan that was approved in two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and twenty-one, I take that back. On, uh, January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, he submitted, um, with a site plan that we believe was already approved. Uh, all departments did their reviews based on the site's surroundings. We looked at landscaping, drainage, things like that, and found those to be acceptable. It's all right. That's my report. I think the, you know, I can turn it back over to the commissioner. The applicant's online. Ask him more detailed questions, I guess. He'll have better history than we will.
Okay. Mr. Box, did you have anything you want to add?
No, I, I think, uh, the way Dave laid that out is correct, that, uh, the original site plan for this site, uh, which predates both myself and Dave, uh, was for a larger building, uh, that was revised to show two buildings, uh, phased in. Uh, the first building was built, uh, they needed to sod and irrigate the, the remainder of the site. Rather than sod and irrigate only to go right back in and rip it out, uh, the petitioner posted a bond uh, for the second phase of the site and is now coming forward with, uh, the site plan for that second building.
Okay, Mr. Chimo, anything you'd like to add?
Um, from what I remember that, I, I don't know if this is just a revised site plan for landscaping purposes, but I, I believe I submitted a site plan for the whole unit showing two buildings from day one. But I did, I did approve, I, I did submit for one large building, which I changed to two buildings like this.
Okay.
So this is essentially phase two of that, that two building site plan?
Yes, yes. And, and then my original site, site plan didn't show the landscaping on it, so that's.
That's what, what Dave was getting at, that it appears this site plan has actually already been approved, but then when it, when he decided to phase it in rather than build both buildings at the same time.
Right.
Revised, and now we're reverting back to what was previously approved.
Right.
Okay. Let's open it up to commissioners. Mr. Spatafora, thank you.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mr. Chiamo, and, um, I just wanted to follow up. I drove by the, uh, site, uh, today, and it looks like what is shown in front of the commissioners is building one proposed. That building has been constructed. At least I know the bricks are up. Is that correct?
Yes.
And building two, that looked like that area, I don't know if there was staking or some type of activity, site planning, I don't know if there was infrastructure development going on or anything like that. Would you please clarify for the commissioners what's going on in, uh, that second, uh, site area for the building two?
Phase, uh, building two, the footings are installed, they're in, in the ground. I was just waiting on steel.
That accounts for at least, you know, for the traffic as far as, you know, at least visible from, uh, uh, the street coming in, uh, Claire Court. Coming up there, the stakes that are, you can see from the road as far as what's going on in the interior there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anybody else? Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, to the petitioners, uh, are your buildings leased out or are these specs?
Uh, this, the second building is a spec building.
First building is already leased and occupied?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Let's move to the public portion. Is there anyone, Mr. Box, that would like to speak tonight? And we'll open it up at seven forty-two.
Anyone who wishes to speak, please digitally raise your hand or press star nine on your cell phone if you're dialed in. I'm not seeing any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Box. We will close the public portion at seven forty-three. Do I have a motion?
Almost closed.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Yes, uh, Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafor?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
And the public portion is closed. Do we have a motion on this item?
Chairman, I did have a question if I might, Mr. Tuckfield?
Go ahead, Mr. Tuckfield.
Um, so, Mr. Skurdo, I, I've, uh, not been in full contact with my email, so you might have responded to this this afternoon, and I have not seen it yet. But I did have a question over the weekend with regards to the, uh, the state of the drawings. There was some thought for me that perhaps the drawing that you had referred to with the latest revisions might not be the drawing we had perceived. Uh, specifically, there was comments, I don't remember if you had done the review or Melissa had, or who had done the review, but with regard to the fire, uh, connection. Uh, you had noted that, uh, the new drawings on the north side. I'm, I'm being, perhaps we're done in here, but are you confident that the drawings we have in our package are the, the current ones that we should approve?
Uh, yeah, you, you made mention about the fire hydrants. We checked today. It, it was an error on our part of getting the dimensions back, because the fire drum moved and we didn't correct the men, didn't correct the direction.
Just, just as long as we were looking at the.
We're looking, same drawing, you are correct.
Okay, very good. Um, and then, uh, just a, a comment to the chair that effectiveness of the site plan aside, I, I also did a site visit, it sounds like Mr. Spatafor did. Um, and obviously there's some unusual, there's been an unusual, uh, path getting to this point, but it is sometimes strange to see a site plan uh, in front of us that has, uh, footings in the ground. So, uh, just the comment that, um, perhaps that's not the best order by, by those putting it together, uh, even if the site plan might be worthwhile in its own right. So, uh, just that comment, and those are all the questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Do we have a motion?
There's no, uh, further discussion, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and, uh, make the, uh, motion to approve the site plan uh, with, uh, based on the report from our planning consultant and discussions in the department. And also condition add motion that the petitioner comply with the three items that our fire inspector, uh, noted that was in our package as well.
Okay, motion by Mr. Spatafora.
Or?
Supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Chairman, my apologies if I could, uh, through, through you to the petitioner. Can we verify the petitioner's familiar with the, uh, requirements from the fire department, just to make sure that, um, we're on the same page with this. I agree with Mr. Spatafor, it should be in the motion. Just wanna make sure that the petitioner is aware of those conditions.
Yes, uh, let me pull them up. Let me see if I can find them. So.
I just wanna make sure what they were.
Yes, I, I, I don't have them offhand, but I, I do know they're.
Okay, why don't we just put them on the record?
Uh, and I don't have them in front of me.
I, I, since I made the motion, I'd be happy to put them on the record, uh, where.
Okay.
McComb Township Fire Prevention Division reviewed the plans and documentation for the project, and the, they're recommending, uh, site plan approval. Condition number one, that the petitioners to comply with the international fire code from the twenty fifteen, two thousand and fifteen edition, and all adapted ordinances. Number two, the FDC must be at least fifty feet, no more than one hundred feet from a hydrant. And number three, the proposed shrubs shall not be located within thirty-six inch of, six inches of the, of FDC. Do you understand that, Mr. Chiamo? Was that your understanding?
Yeah, yep.
In my motion, then with that clarification on the record.
And I'd be happy to continue to support.
Who, who's supported Mr. Oliver, right?
Oh, you did. My apologies.
I supported you comment, but I, but I'll follow up.
All right, so Mr. Spatafora, you made the motion with some conditions, and Mr. Oliver, you supported that. Mr. Bentley?
I, I'm gonna re-support it, yes.
Re-support it, yes, thank you. Mr. Bentley, call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Spatafor?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes, and Mr. Hardy?
Yes. All right. Motion passes. Let's move on. Item number seven, old business. Mr. Box, you have anything for us?
Old business.
Okay, Mr. Skurdo, do you have anything for us tonight?
Okay.
Okay. Public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak with the reminder that they have four minutes and need to state their name and your address, please? You see anybody, Mr. Box?
Anyone would like to speak, please digitally raise your hand or press star nine.
And remember, this is on non-agenda items.
I am not seeing any hands being raised at this time.
All right, then we'll close the public comments. Um, commissioner comments. Anyone? Mr. Tuckfield?
Chairman, uh, just, uh, uh, one comment this evening. Uh, several years ago, um, I had brought up to our, uh, then planner and some other individuals, uh, some concerns that were brought to me, uh, specifically with regards to the, uh, formation of our ordinance that pertains to, um, massage parlors and, um, similar uses. Some of them might be medical, some of them might be, um, maybe more of a spa nature. Um, it was kind of from a result of a, of a news story at the time where something had come up. Um, and at the time, uh, the conversation I had with staff did not extend far to the commission. Uh, was that it was a difficult issue, uh, and at the time, the thought was that it was probably, uh, something that was better handled in other areas than our ordinance and our planning. Um, specifically trying to keep, um, uh, or, or, or try to avoid criminal activities that we've seen. And I tended to agree with that opinion. I felt it was valid and, and that was staff's opinion at the time. Uh, we've recently had another issue, um, similar, might have been in the same place. Um, it was brought up to me again. I think that the answer might be the same, but I was hoping that staff could, could glance into it and see if there's any thoughts on if our ordinance with regards to those uses needs to be updated. Um, it's obviously a, a difficult situation. There's a lot of different types of uses that could be similar and, and licensed and, and for the lack of a better word, legitimate. Um, and that was, I think, what our concern was at the time and why we left our existing ordinance beat. Uh, but considering that it's something that, that has happened within our township that was negative, uh, I was hoping that they could look into it and just come back to us. If there was any thoughts of things that should change or if we need to, to readjust it or readdress it anyways. So, uh, just a question, I, I hadn't talked to Mr. Fox about this. My, my apologies to him. Uh, but if, if him and Mr. Skurdo could take a glance at it and see if there was any thoughts on that should be, uh, readdressed, uh, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? Anyone else? Nobody? Okay. And let's move on to the McComb Township Board of Trustees. Leasine, Mr. Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. A couple of things I want to, uh, bring to the board tonight. One, um, I'm happy to announce that our planning department has hired a planning analyst. It's, and, uh, her name is Melissa, and I'm gonna say it's Melissa Kay, because I'm not gonna ever not like me if I goof that name up. But, uh, uh, it sounds like, uh, she's gonna be a great addition, and, uh, I'm happy to announce that she'll be starting work in probably a couple of weeks. So that, that's one thing. The second thing, uh, is kind of very interesting that's taking place. At, at one time, our township, uh, for the developers and anyone developing, had to put up a one hundred percent bond, uh, for their projects. And, uh, not only was it very costly for the developers. Uh, for their projects. And uh, not only was it very costly for the developers, but it was very um. It, it, it took up a lot of time for our employees in the planning department and probably all departments because they had to go through so many departments. So um, the supervisor asked uh the people that, that were in charge to take a look at it, see what they come up with. The engineering department, all departments that needed to look at it. And they come up with it.
Mr. Oliver, something has gone wrong and your mic is not working. Can you hear me? Yeah, your mic is not working. Mr. Oliver, can you hear me? Thumbs up if you can hear me. Okay, we can't hear you. Mr. Box, can you fix that somehow?
I don't think we did. I don't, can you hear me, Michael?
Yep, I can.
I think it's everybody in the township offices.
Yeah, I think so too. Mr. Spatafora, are you good now? Thumbs up? Yes, we can hear you. Well, maybe I should hear you, right? Uh, Mr. Bentley, you good? Okay, Mr. Oliver, let's try it again from the beginning.
Mr. Hardy, can you hear us?
Yeah, we're, we're not getting anything from Mr. Oliver.
We may be having problems. We may have to leave you talking.
Yeah, with the echo. You know, everybody delete and let's see what, or mute and let's see what happens.
Mr. Hardy? You're gonna have to proceed and we're gonna have to figure out a vote in a different way because we're not gonna be able to fix this in line. You're still muted.
I don't think it's gonna work. So, Mr. Oliver, maybe you could move to where Mr. Spatafor or Mr. Duckfield is. And then we could get your comments.
They're, they're all gonna do the same thing. We're having a technical issue here.
Okay, a technical issue.
Myself and it's gonna give echoes when I do it.
Okay, all right. Well then, is it, Mr. Box, anything that you can fix real quick or no?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Then we will close uh the, the McComb Township Board of Trustees liaison update and save it for the next time if that's okay, Mr. Oliver. And ZBA liaison update, we'll probably have the same problem, right, Mr. Duckfield?
Yes, but I haven't done this evening.
Okay, good. Uh, planning department items, are there any? Just uh a thumbs up, Mr.?
No items this evening.
Okay, good. Then a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Make that a motion.
So, so moved. Okay. Oh, I think we might have fixed it.
Mr. Spatafor a second.
The motion. Mr. Duckfield, did you second it?
Mr. Spatafor.
Mr. Spatafor has seconded. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll. If you can. Well, we'll take the echo. We wanna be as uh legal as possible here. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Bentley, was made by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Spatafor. Please call the roll. Get unmuted.
Muted as ever since.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take the echo for this. We're almost done.
Okay, Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Duckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Okay. Motion passes. Where was Mr. Ivanowski tonight, Mr. Box?
Uh, he helped us get set up.
Okay, all right. Have a good night, everybody, and we'll see you in two weeks.